What's going on, Chums? Welcome back to Night City Council. My name is John John the Wise, and I am here with the illustrious Mayor of Balancedown himself, James Hutt. How are you, James?
I'm doing great. How are you doing, John John?
Doing well, and of course, we have a very special guest with us today, returning onto my channel, Cody Pondsmith himself has joined us to talk about some cool stuff. Cody, thank you for coming on.
I have returned. Thank you for having me.
He has returned from his slumber, from toiling away, giving everybody all the Witcher goodness. How's that been treating you?
Terribly, but I think it's coming out great.
Oh, it is. It is. It's gone good.
Yeah. We appreciate all your hard work back there and the fact that you come out for air sometimes, you know, it's good for you.
Every once in a while, you gotta come out of the mines, you know?
Yeah, you gotta make sure the world is still there, right?
Yeah.
We're selling this to people, right? There's still people here, no apocalypse?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's still people left.
Well, today, we have a special show for you guys because we're gonna be talking about a new DLC written by yours truly here, Cody Pondsmith and James, called Hornets Pharmacy: A Chemical Wonderland. We're gonna dive into that DLC, talk about it and how you can use it in your games. And of course, another countdown to Black Chrome. We got another preview for you all. The Rostavik Cleaver, a really cool-looking weapon. We're definitely gonna be talking about that. And before we get into the show, I just gotta tell you, there's more previews on social media. Make sure you guys follow Artel Sorian Games on all social media. It's on their blogs as well. There's, I think there's two other previews. I think you guys have done three so far, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, one just yesterday.
There you go. So there's other previews if you, you know, if you can't get enough, we got it for you. So, um, let's just get straight to it. And then if we have any time, we'll answer some questions. How do you guys feel about that?
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we got some community questions too. But Cody, first of all, talk to us about Hornets Pharmacy: A Chemical Wonderland. How did this come about? Tell us which, tell us about this.
So, so this came about because we've had a lot of people asking about more street drugs and, uh, you know, chemicals, cyberware relating to poisoning people, stuff like that. And quite, quite a long time ago, before we were working on Red, I was actually playing a character who is Hornet, who is eventually, they started as a fixer and they became a chemical weapons dealer effectively, sort of during the Fourth Corporate War. In a kind of, kind of amusing story through the sort of evolution of that character in the game, they wound up getting really into creating bioweapons. Um, so we sat down to basically, uh, as Hornet kind of exists as one of the sort of, um, like mid-tier fixers that players wind up encountering on, uh, a somewhat more, uh, you know, common basis than some of the other sort of higher-tier fixers. Uh, we wanted to create this, um, we wanted to create this DLC that would be kind of you going to Hornet in much the same way as, you know, other DLCs you went to, um, you know, the Upload or, um, other sort of characters in the setting to get, yeah, Woodchipper's Garage.
Her name, her name is Woodchipper.
Respect on her name.
To, to sort of get some of these, uh, some of these, uh, interesting toys focused very heavily in sort of the chemical and poison, uh, sort of milieu, as it were.
Yeah, very cool. I love the idea that we have additional drugs and like, uh, you know, you're only cool if you know what these drugs are and what they do. Nobody wants to be the square that doesn't know what Six Gun or Time Warp is. And you're like, what's that? And like, come on, Chum, I thought you were cool. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It was, it was a lot of fun to kind of take, cause most of the, uh, most of the, you know, street drugs we, we put in Horns Pharmacy, uh, Berserker, Six Gun, Time Warp, and kind of in a way, Primetime, are based on old drugs from 2020. So it was kind of this idea of taking these, what were sort of known combat drugs in 2020, uh, and bringing them forward into 2045, either kind of exactly as they were, like Berserker and Time Warp, or in sort of somewhat new forms with this assumption that, you know, Hornet had tinkered with the design to make something slightly different for a sort of new, uh, situation, as it were.
Very good. Uh, James, do you have a favorite drug here of choice?
I like Six Gun. I think Six Gun's very cool. Um, it has interest, it expands net running, so. I know, there's, there's extra net running content in here too. Uh, I, I know, it's okay, calm down. Uh, uh, one thing I think's really interesting about the DLC is, uh, we wrote this in a hotel room, right?
God, yes. We wrote this, we wrote this in a hotel room at Pax Unplugged.
Um, that's where all genius comes from, a hotel room.
Yeah.
We get a lot of stuff done in convention hotel rooms.
You get done, you get done with the shift at the booth, you know, it's, it's, uh, you're out, completely out of physical energy, your legs hurt. You just crash on the couch, pull out your laptop.
There's, there's something to be said for that, is that you spend the entire day, um, talking to, you know, people who listen to this show, awesome fans, and it hypes you up to do some game design. So when you get back and you're physically exhausted, you're like, but I'm not mentally exhausted.
Yeah, the, usually people don't take work home with them, but you guys, you couldn't resist.
We can't, we can't not take work home with us.
Not at mention, at, at the minimum. But yeah, normally too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're all appreciative of, uh, you know, you guys putting in that extra care in the hotel room. You could have been sleeping for the next day, but you came up with drugs, which I don't know what that says about you guys, but we're just gonna float past that.
Nothing, nothing good, but you know, we'll deal with it.
Well, there was a lot of urge involved, so.
Gotcha. Well, let's talk about Six Gun. It's a hundred Eddie premium, uh, cost per dose kind of thing. We're talking about street level kind of thing, you know, you, it's for net runners, net runners that got a little bit of Eddies in their pocket. It lasts four hours. The, for the duration of the primary effect, users' move and reflex are reduced by two, at a minimum of one. For the duration of the primary effect, the user gains a plus-two speed while jacked in. Hey, that's good for sliding, right? Past some black ice, you want that little edge to get, get past some black ice. For the duration of the primary effect, the user treats any unsafe jackout not caused by a program effect as a safe jackout. Now, that's pretty insane. So while you're under the effect of the drug, you can always just jack out anytime you want without having to deal with the consequences. And then also, once per turn, the user can choose to take one point of humanity loss to gain one additional net action. Dude, that's pretty cool.
That was, that was one of the, that, that's like the gold star effect on that one. James and I were working on it and, uh, it, the, the idea came up of, of, um, you know, that con, that concept of, of burning humanity to get better in the net and that concept of like pushing, pushing your brain probably farther than it should be pushed with the benefit of this, of this drug.
Yeah, I, I think the, um, due to the, due to the humanity loss effect being like a permanent, almost legacy board game style effect to your character, um, and the cost being a hundred dollars a dose, this isn't going to be something that you bring to every net run, but if you know you're coming against a net run that'll be life and death, can you afford not to? Um, especially if you know you're going into a heist situation and all this stuff. Um, there's interesting, what's also interesting is even after all that gets settled, you're like, okay, I'm willing to spend the humanity. I'm willing to spend the money. There's also the move penalty, which is actually a really big deal, cause it makes you better in the net, but it lowers your options of retreat outside of the net. Um, and since this is the type of thing that you take into stressful, powerful net architectures, while those tend to be heavily guarded, it's also a risky play. Even after the money is nothing to you, the humanity is nothing to you, even then, it's still balanced. That's one of the things I like about the science.
Yeah, and you're also gonna suck at shooting your gun. You're also gonna suck at, uh, driving, you're gonna suck at, um, will that also affect your ability to evade gunfire?
Isn't that a minus to move?
It's minus, move and reflex.
It's move and reflex. Um, so it will, it will, you cannot dodge, uh, when you have it, you cannot dodge the bullets.
Yeah.
Well, for now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know.
We all know, we all know that it's already been spoiled for Black Chrome.
Yeah, yeah, you know, there's, there's gonna be mixing and matching.
There will be work around in the, look, we're, we're selling you the problem and then we're selling you a solution too. It's, it's, it's all a big scam.
We'll just say your session zeros, your session zeros might be a little bit longer after Black Chrome comes out.
Probably.
So, uh, let's go to the secondary effect. It's a DV-17, which is pretty steep, um, for, to avoid addiction. And if you're addicted, you have minus-two speed while jacked in unless you're experiencing the primary effect of Six Gun. So now you're gonna be negative two in the net. You're not gonna be a worthy net runner anymore.
You can run, eating guns all this and completely negate this just for one net action, but then you're saying, I'll pay a net action instead of paying that.
Plus, if you get hit with killer or, uh, you know, poison flatline or anything like that, you're right back down again.
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly. So really cool, really fun. I always love, uh, items and, and stuff that have a upside and a downside. And I think the upside and downsides are perfectly balanced on this one. Very exciting.
Talking about extra net actions here, it's gotta be.
Yeah, it was a good hotel room session. Uh, why don't we talk also about the additive compounds? This is something I don't think we've seen before, have we?
Nope.
No, the, the additive compen, compounds are, are fully new for this. Um, I, uh, we wanted a, a way to kind of take the, uh, stuff you already had, in this case, you know, poison, and kind of expand its uses. Um, and they're kind of very specifically set for like three very specific situations. Um, so you've got your delaying compound, which, uh, when mixed with a vial of poison or biotoxin, it will delay the effects by either a minute or an hour, um, so that you don't like, you know, slip the poison into somebody's drink and then, you know, hand it to them and immediately they start, you know, they take that poison damage. You can kind of, um, you know, hold it out such that you're not going to be immediately caught for poisoning somebody. You've got that distilling compound, which takes the DV to, uh, to hit somebody with that poison and raises it by two just for, you know, uh, you're hitting somebody who's gonna be, you know, a solo or, you know, perhaps a drug addict or somebody who's running with combat drugs already, is gonna have a really high comparative resist torture and drug skill. And then you've got that osmosis compound, just in case you really wanna set traps by just slathering poison all over everything. So the moment they, you know, as, as we say here, the moment somebody touches a doorknob they're not supposed to, they get hit by the poison.
I, that was from a movie, right? What movie was that? Somebody sprayed?
It's a spy thing, it's.
Yeah, like Mer, Liquid Mercury was on a door handle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Movie, uh, well, yeah.
Oh, I have no idea. I'll ask Jay about that one.
But, uh, yeah, it's one of those, like he sprayed the door handle of the car, the guy came to open the car, got mercury poisoning and died. I'm sure it's not, the science doesn't hold up completely, but that's the.
Yeah, yeah.
There's definitely stuff you could do that with. Also, just tea.
Yeah.
Just use tea or squirt gun or.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, that's cool, you know. The cool thing about this is you could use these additive compounds in other, uh, drugs from the core rulebook, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I like about it. Uh, it, it leaves a lot of, uh, room for creativity, so that's cool. Um, and then there's some new pharmaceuticals here. We got Seditive and Veritas.
Yes. So these expand the, uh, the med tech, uh, role ability, so they're actually a large expansion of a character class. Um, I believe Veritas is our truth serum. That's like our, um, med tech administered truth serum. So it's a very powerful tool for solving investigation gameplay, stuff like that. Uh, and, um, you know, it, it'll have the effect that you're, that, on your table of like a Zone of Truth type thing, uh, but, uh, I believe Cody, this was, you were big on this, this concept. It has to be the like suggestible state.
We, when we're, sorry, when we were doing this, go, go ahead.
It's cooler. Go, explain.
When we were doing this, uh, we were both very concerned by the concept of making a truth serum because, you know, as James said, that shuts down a lot of gameplay.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it sucks for players getting affected by it as well, you know, it's, it's a rough time all around. So I actually spent like, uh, a surprising amount of time sitting up in a hotel room in Philadelphia, like researching, um, you know, uh, researching actual real-world, you know, truth serums or whatever. So what it does is, uh, when administered, it doesn't force you to tell the truth. It, like real-world, you know, truth serums, it puts you in this like kinda hazy, like half-asleep, hi, highly suggestive state, um, where you have a super hard time focusing and thus you take this massive minus-five penalty to acting, concentration, conversation, deduction, human perception, persuasion. So it's not that it's forcing you to tell the truth, it's that it's making it so hard for you to focus well enough to construct a good lie. So you, and at the same time, it's hitting your concentration and your conversation and human perception. So not only is it making it harder for you to lie, it's making it harder for you to tell when your interrogators are lying to you. It's making it harder for you to tell, you know, subtle clues. It's making it harder for you to concentrate on things. So it, rather than kind of giving it just this like, wow, affected by this drug, you cannot lie. It kind of gives it a bit more gameplay benefit while also making it kind of a little more real in a sense.
Yeah, got it. So it's, it's not meant to be like, oh, okay, what do you wanna know? And I'll give you straight answers. It's more of like, you're putting someone in this like kind of concussed, hazy, not sure where they are situation. You're bombarding them with questions and they might give you like one-word answers and then also be like, where am I? Who are you? In between their answers, you know what I mean? So it's better than, uh, as far as like mechanics go, it's a DV-17 resist torture drugs on the, uh, victim and then ten minutes long, uh, of a hazy state. And they get a minus-five to acting, concentration, conversation, deduction, human perception and persuasion checks. Now, the, uh, the human perception is gonna be one of what the NPC or the person that you're giving to this to, that's what they're gonna be using to figure out if you're lying to them or what your intentions are. But, you know, that's their interpretation of what's going on, you know, it could be like completely bonkers. Too, so, okay. Anything else you wanted to add on that, James?
Um, yeah, so in the core rulebook, we have a lie detector and this combined with that drug, uh, make a very powerful toolkit. Um, I think this drug is actually really interesting if you're a, um, if you have a party where one person is a med tech and another person is playing a lawman. Um, because then you get to fully experience that whole scene, um, and interrogation and become even more of a part of your team's, you know, repertoire. Anyway, so I was very happy that those, those two designs interacted very well.
Yeah, very good. And, uh, we'll quick, quickly mention Seditive is exactly what you think it would be. It's putting someone to sleep. Um, there's a benefit, you'll get the plus-two bonus to your surgery check if you're giving it to someone that you're doing surgery on, but it can also be used as sort of like a weapon. Um, one minute or twenty combat rounds, but the kicker is they can be awoken by taking damage or an outside party takes, uh, using an action to rouse them. So they, they can come out of it, you know, it's not, it's not a permanent state. So, yeah, that's good. Okay, sounds good.
Sort of a tool. And it's good, that one's good if you're a med tech that focuses on surgery. Um, but you wanna, you wanna get a little bit of, uh, other tech skills, of other medical tech skills in with that.
Yeah, I like it. Um, okay, how far in? We're twenty minutes in. I think we gotta talk about Black Chrome, so.
Oh, yeah.
You guys wanna talk about the gear and cyberware? We gotta talk about the cyberware.
Well, the gear is very straightforward. Uh, the gear is just the Suzume Bachi assassin drone. Uh, we wanted to give you an assassin drone that you could, that, that could be sort of deployed cause that was one of the things that we were kind of missing was this very sort of, you know, uh, biotoxin arrows and air hypo kind of little flying drone. Um, but then the cyberware, uh, we have the, the body weight auto-injector, which is pretty much good for just about anybody. It's this, um, internal cyberware that installs a single dro, dose of a street drug in it that can be, um, you know, uh, injected into your bodies and action. So it's this, you know, pretty much, uh, relatively undetectable subdermal cyberware that can have any of the street drugs that we have here loaded. So if you need this in a, in a pinch, you can still get it in you, as it were. You can, you can get your, you know, your synth coke or your berserker or whatnot and kind of smuggle it into places as well.
Yeah, so the stipulation is a bio-monitor, if you got one of those, you can use this auto-injector to load you with the, with the street drug of choice automatically when you either roll initiative, receive a critical injury or enter a chosen wound state. Do you have, can it be any of the three or do you have to pick one of the three? Any of the.
So one of the cool things is that you can, you know, the mind wears at, oh, I put one on when I get this injury, one when I get this injury, one when I get this injury. Um, and considering it doesn't cost you an action, uh, when the trigger goes off, um, you can kind of view that as gaining an action in that combat. So it's actually rather powerful and a real boost to using street drugs as part of your combat toolkit.
I can see the solos ready to min-max.
They roll it if they take Time Warp.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, God.
Uh, the second I enter a wound state, I become immune to wound states. That's another good one. Um, Cody, what's one? What, what is, what is, what does Hornet have?
I mean, Hornet personally carries primetime in his because he, he needs to be, he needs to be able to, to, you know, shut off his emotions and, and become, uh, you know, cool and convincing at any moment, but that's cause he's a fixer.
Yeah, yeah, I like the, yeah. That's, that's the cool and will.
Action.
Say that again?
What's, uh, what's Hornet's activation trigger for that?
Um, Hornet's activation trigger is just that he activates it. He, he, uh, he doesn't have that like when he goes into a wound state or anything. He relies on, he relies on Fox to make sure he doesn't go into wound states.
Indeed, indeed.
There you go. Um, all right, so, uh, the last one here is the Pursuit Security Inc. Gas Jet. A cyberarm option. What do we got here?
So this is, well, this is a personal favorite of mine, another piece of cyberware that Hornet has. It's in his, in his cyberarm. Um, it can be loaded with three doses of a street drug or three vials of poison or biotoxin. And, uh, when activated, it will shoot a cloud of that street drug or biotoxin uh, out in effectively the same range as a shotgun shell, forcing anybody in that area um, to effectively be affected by the, uh, by the street drug or, uh, poison. Um, so it's, it's really good for if you want to, you know, it's, it's not a great like every combat situation, but it's a good way to kind of put uh, either poison on a lot of people at once if you're like caught out in a situation. Or it also kind of lets you weaponize some of the street drugs that you would normally not be able to fully weaponize.
Yeah, I could just imagine your, go ahead.
Oh, things like blue glass, for instance.
I was gonna say, I can imagine you're at a nightclub and the DJ just sprays the crowd. It's like. Yeah.
Oh, I like that.
All right, so that's, uh, that's Hornets Pharmacy. Uh, make sure you guys go to the Artel Sorian official website. You can get it there. It is free, three ninety-nine, super free. And enjoy it, add it to your game, mix and match, and get ready for Black Chrome, which we're gonna be talking about right now. The Rostavik Cleaver from Black Chrome, uh, beautiful looking sword that looks like it's gonna cut anything in half. Cody, you chose this weapon to preview, so let's, let's let you talk about it.
So this is, this is like my absolute favorite weapon for Black Chrome. Um, and, uh, it's, it's basically just this, this massive, uh, like four-foot-long, six-inch-wide blade that's like attached with a battery pack. And the, the blade itself, uh, acts as a, as a two-handed exotic, very heavy melee weapon, but you have to have a body eleven or higher to wield it, cause this thing is like, like anime sword level enormous.
Yeah.
Um, and you can basically, uh, the cool part is that on top of this, you can charge it, uh, which requires sort of begin, beginning, it requires an action. It takes a minute, uh, to charge. But once you charge it, the battery pack on this thing will basically heat the entire sort of length of the blade white-hot, so much so that if you are not like actively holding the blade while it's charging, um, it will melt onto any surface that you put it on, functionally destroying the weapon, cause it's getting so crazy hot. But at that point, um, it basically acts as a, uh, a very, an exotic, very heavy melee weapon that deals five D six damage instead. And when charged, it ignores all armor of, of SP eleven or lower. So it is just as, what was it, James? You were, you were pulling on, on big hot knife energy?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a couple of things. It's a ten-thousand-degree knife. Um, additionally, uh, it's also the Sword from No More Heroes.
Yes.
Uh, uh, and, and it's also, uh, the Cloud Stripes weapon at the same time. Uh, it, so, uh, has a time limit on the, uh, on the heat, right? Because the, uh, the batteries don't get, this is one of the weapons that uses batteries in this book, where the batteries are not reusable. The batteries actually melt.
Oh, shit.
Oh, and additionally, anything hit by the Cleaver is on fire.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yeah, mildly on fire, as it says.
It's just this massive, massive thousand-degree, ten-thousand-degree knife, and it's my favorite item and I think possibly the entirety of Black Chrome.
It also has some pretty cool lore. Um, do we, do we wanna, once you, you wanna reveal the lore paragraph? This is a, this is a podcast format show, we can.
Yeah, we could do whatever we want.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll let you go over the lore because that's, that's your, your brainchild.
Fine, I'll write it. All right.
This was a nice piece.
This is Rostavik, the Rostavik Cleaver. Also, I would absolutely love we could get this, uh, beautiful art on screen, John John.
Of course, always.
This battery-powered, four-foot-long, six-inch-wide, white-hot vibrating blade originally started as a joke among Rostavik R and D staffs. When the execs at Sawoyle saw it, however, they assumed otherwise and ordered it to be produced as part of a limited production run. The blade of the Cleaver with a K, uh, is powered with a large motor in the handle. Uh, to both vibrate the blade two thousand times per minute and heat it to an unholy temperature, making it the exact opposite of an efficient and rational design. When uncharged, the Rostavik Cleaver is a two-handed exotic, very heavy melee weapon that requires body eleven or higher to wield. Due to its massive size, it cannot be wielded in a single hand by any means. Charging this weapon begins with an action, which starts a one-minute-long, twenty runs of combat, uh, heating process during which the blade must be wielded, or it will melt itself into any surface it's left touching, destroying the weapon. Starting the heating process also requires the blade be loaded with three fresh fifty euro, uh, euro buck battery packs, which get as hot as the length of the blade during the heating process, destroying them beyond repair. As a safety feature, you can only reload these battery packs while the blade is uncharged, which takes an action. After the heating process is complete, the blade begins to vibrate automatically. Once charged, the Rostavik Cleaver will remain charged for exactly five minutes. Um, final paragraph. Um, while charged, the Cleaver is a two-handed exotic, very heavy melee weapon, which deals five D six damage. while charged, the Cleaver is a two-handed exotic, very heavy melee weapon, which deals five D six damage that requires body 11 or higher to wield. While charged, damaged out by this weapon ignores the target's armor entirely if it is lower than 11 SP. Armor with SP 11 and higher is still interact with as normal. Additionally, anyone or anything hit by the Cleaver is now mildly on fire. If the Cleaver is unequipped while charging, it will melt itself into any surface it's left touching, destroying the weapon. 30 seconds before time is up, the battery compartment begins to smoke. Does it?
It's amazing. That's amazing. There, I love the, uh, so just to give people an idea, the only way to get a body 11 is through a linear frame, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're talking about some psycho in a linear frame, carrying this giant sword in their hand and it's like lighting up the entire room and cutting things in half. And lighting it on fire.
Lots of, lots of fun times to be had with, uh, people showing up with this weapon already charged. Uh, exciting, exciting boss fight.
Yeah. And, um, what do you think about like a tech? You know, upgrading this thing. What are some things a tech can do to this thing? You, oh, well, it's exotic. I don't think it.
So exotic weapons can still be tech upgraded?
That's right. They just can't have mods, right? Modifier?
Right. And LA weapon anyways. So.
Yeah.
I don't know those. Um, the little softy confirmed for the book. Most people were excited for that, but we did that intentionally so that all of the exotic weapons could be different in the melee category because they have to be different in melee weapons. Okay. Um, I don't know is the answer. I have no idea what techs are going to do with this. I suspect there's going to be a lot of, I want to make it a 66 weapon. Um, I suspect what if it was, uh, able to be wielded in one hand?
I'm, I'm sure we'll get shortening the, uh, the, uh, charging time.
I imagine shortening the charging time if you're.
I just, I just imagine somebody, they just like, they've added like, uh, like a, a chainsaw starter onto it. They just like rev this, uh, this sword.
I could see shortening the charging time for, uh, burning additional batteries.
Yeah. Oh God, just like overpower it, overcharge it.
Supercharge the battery. Yep.
But, um, there's also another sword, which I'll tease uh, here of similar pricing and quality by Arasaka that includes uh, additives and perhaps those could be fitted onto the weapon.
Perhaps.
Uh, but you know, um, I don't think that one's been spoiled yet. And that's your, that's the tease of the day.
There you go.
Can't say too much. Arasaka will come for us.
Yeah, Arasaka. Oh, man. So, uh, basically you, you have six minutes to use this thing. Cause it's one minute to charge it and then five minutes of usage and then it's got, it's done.
If you can't, can't get something done in five minutes of having a giant flaming sword, I don't think you deserve a giant flaming sword.
And it's very much that, that old thing where it's like, if I pull out the blade, it needs to taste blood before, if I turn this thing on, it needs to cut some.
I spent money to charge this thing. There is be happening in the next five minutes.
It's like, well, I guess we're fighting. By the way, is this thing going to be loud too?
I can only imagine it makes a horrible sound.
It vibrates how much?
It's 2,000 times per minute. That thing is probably like,
The lap mono blade.
Yeah.
My God.
Okay. Very good. So when the battery.
I apologize for anyone's ears.
No, don't worry. I put an audio limiter. So.
Oh, excellent.
Don't worry. I do.
I'll make a lot of loud noises now.
You're good to go. So once the battery's out, uh, what's, what, what can someone do? Just fresh new battery and you're good to go?
Um, I mean, once it's cooled down, it's cooled down. Then you can use an axe to replace the battery and then you gotta heat it back up.
Yeah, gotcha. So you're going to need a tech to take a look at it. And they're going to be like, what is this ungodly thing you brought? I can't even carry it. That's cool. All right. Awesome. Thank you so much for that preview, guys. We really appreciate it. Um, and we cannot wait to see some more Black Chrome. Why don't we get to some questions from the community?
Awesome.
I'm sure people are dying to ask you guys. And now that we got Cody here, people are like, oh, super bonus.
Some of those esoteric questions we like.
Yeah, here's a good one. Uh, I've been kind of thinking about too. So, uh, this is from Angel Cruz. When you get dismembered limb, critical injury on a cyber limb, you completely lose the limb and all limb attachments permanently. Also, when it comes to treating the dismembered limb in the cyber limb, does that repair the limb as well or make it so the critical injury doesn't apply? Very good.
So you can't put a limb back, uh, a dismembered limb back on unless you fix the critical injury. Um, I'm pretty sure that once you fix the critical injury, the limb goes right back on. Um, now I know if I cut off your limb and, uh, it started to look like you were getting away, uh, I might, you know, either grab, take the limb because it's valuable. You said it was full of all that stuff. Or I might, you know, hit it with the Rostovic Cleaver, smash it a little bit. Um, so this is, this isn't to say that the GM can never destroy your cyber limb once it gets cut off your arm. Um, but it is to say that it does not by raw, by raw, destroy it in the process of severing. By raw, it's a clean.
So you could, so once you fix the critical injury, you can put it back on. We assume that would be, is that part of the, part of fixing the critical injury or is that you have to reinstall it?
That is part of fixing the critical injury.
Cool.
Very good. Okay. So it's, it, you don't have to go like down the cyber limb route. You could just do the, you know, you know, where you have to use like cyber tech instead of, uh, whatever meant.
No, that is, you can use cyber tech instead.
Got you.
It gives you an option, I think.
Well, if not, we'll let you know on the next episode.
Tell me how wrong I am in the next episode.
Yeah. Um, well, I had actually another question, uh, that's not on here. What do you guys do for critical injuries for non, uh, human targets? You know, we got drones, vehicles. Oh, we lost the phone. We got drones, we got vehicles, we got buildings, we got all kinds of stuff. Is there anything, um, I know there's no like rules is written implementation, but what do you guys think, uh, can be thrown in?
Personally, I, personally, that kind of reg, that, that kind of depends on the thing. Um, in a lot of cases I'll, I'll apply the critical injury if it makes sense. Like, you know, dismemberments and broken legs on a drone makes sense. But like, you know, if I get like, you know, I don't know, uh, heart damage or something like that, I'll usually reroll um, until I get something that works.
I've, uh, specifically with drones, sometimes I've treated it as EMP. Um, most of the time though, I just say, hey, you can't do that. Um, just it, and I don't say that to be a dick. I say that to keep the combat flowing. Cause typically that drone is dead already. Um, when you're doing enough damage to hit a drone with a critical injury, it's most likely unless it's a high-end Savannah Panther, in which case it has actual limbs. Maybe I could be interested in that. Most of the time it's almost dead. If you know, you're on six, six, four, two, it's close to gone. And, uh, I just don't, um, I, I, in my games, I really value, um, shortening the amount of time you have to wait between your turn.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's vital, especially if you've got net runners, they're net running, there's all kinds of stuff going on. Um, yeah, when in my experience, like, let's say one of my players or they're shooting at a vehicle, they get double sixes or triple sixes. I'm like thinking to myself, all right. If I say the vehicle has a flat tire, is that equivalent to a broken leg? I think maybe not because there's like four people in the vehicle. And it's like, four people are affected by it. They all get whiplash from the crash, you know? So it's like, it's hard, but at the same time I want to say something happens, you know what I mean?
I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, oh, go ahead.
Vehicles. Um, the reason why that isn't the case is because of game speed. Um, but also because I wanted to privilege the aim for weak point uh, action, because what that does is privilege melee weapons a lot. And you know, we, we like, we like Akira here. We're a big fans of Akira and other people's motorcycles with very heavy melee weapons because we have interface plugs. Geez, what's that with a Rostic Cleaver? On a motorcycle? Let's see it. Let's see it, people.
I have, I have always, I've always wanted to make a nomad character who just has interface plugs in a motorcycle and their handle is Centaur and they just never get off the motorcycle.
Off the motorcycle.
Yeah, actually somebody asked some really cool question about that. Remember that, James? Somebody said, if you could interface and then you evade with your motorcycle?
Oh, that guy. Um, yeah.
If you got the right, if you got the right upgrades, you can.
If you have the right upgrade.
Yeah, it was one of these. Uh, okay. Honestly, there's a lot of, there's a lot of like, you know, on page this, it says do this. Uh, there isn't a lot of esoteric questions. I think for a regular episode that James and I are on, we can answer these questions, like more rules questions. But I think, uh, it's more appropriate if we, if we talk game stuff. So, um, I wanted to talk to you guys about.
They don't want to wait for the opportunity. We got Cody here, right?
Yeah, we got, we gotta talk about game stuff. Um, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit, uh, you know, Cyberpunk has been out for a while now. Is there anything, uh, that you've been using in your own personal Red games? And obviously don't talk about stuff that could be coming in future publications. But stuff that, you know, you've been toying around with as homebrew or, or adjusted things or stuff that you saw that just really works, even if it's not like something big, you know?
Gosh. Uh, let's see.
It's, it, the, it sounds bad, but most everything I do in my, or my home game is I'm testing things that I'm going to put into a future DLC.
I figured, I figured for, yeah, for you, it's like, yeah.
Working campaign.
Yeah, that's not the right question for James, basically.
But Cody, tell, tell me your homebrew. I won't be mad.
Um, I mean, the, the, I've been, I've only been running my current Red game for I think like three sessions so far. So a lot of it has been pretty, pretty by the book, but, um, I, uh, I have been, my, my current campaign deals a lot more with like net ghosts and AI. Um, so I've been, I've been toying a lot with how to inter, interact with AI and net ghosts in, in the system as it exists, which is interesting. Um, I've been generally treating, uh, I generally treat net ghosts as just like purely, uh, like effectively netrunner characters with the assumption that they have to exist within a net architecture. Um, that basically they are just constantly jacked into the net and don't have a physical body to go back to. But other than that, they kind of function as a, uh, as a sort of enemy netrunner or, you know, allied netrunner. I'll usually give them some programs, making kind of the assumption that when they were soul killed, it kind of like pulled some of that with them and or now that they are an AI, they can kind of almost build their own programs, both offensive and defensive.
Hmm.
Um, and then on the AI, I kind of do the same thing, but, um, we've, as James has, has said in the past, I've, you said it here, we kind of treat AI as, uh, its own special thing. Yeah. AI are able to break the rules basically. Um, so I give AI, uh, more capability to kind of not, not necessarily like make programs on the fly, but, uh, I try to make each AI have something that it kind of does or allow it to, in some cases, um, augment the net architecture it's in a little bit. Like, uh, change what's on the floors or move the floors in some way, uh, sort of as a net action.
My working through AI homebrew has all, there's a couple of times it's come up in my game. I've always just treated it as I'm just throwing a net runner, an enemy net runner at them, except that enemy net runner is going to go in between everybody else's turn.
Hmm, okay.
It's gonna get returns and it's gonna feel like you're fighting four enemy net runners at the same time.
That's a good idea. I like that.
It, because they, I, I like that because it makes them feel inhuman and they aren't.
Yeah.
Yeah, like their computing power is so powerful that they could do things human beings can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I've, uh, I've given one of my netrunner players like a soul killed AI. Um, it was like a copy of a soul killed AI. There was multiple copies and then the one AI was like, I want you to kill the other ones so I can just be one and feel kind of like a human, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of like the, our equivalent of in D and D, giving somebody a dragon egg.
Basically, because now, now they're in the net and I allow that AI to, to do one net action.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like they get an extra net action, but it's, it's narratively done through like this AI assistant.
I, I did, I'm doing a somewhat similar thing in, uh, in my current game. My netrunner uh, delved into places they should not have gone and, uh, got, wound up getting a, uh, getting a net ghost uh, effectively trapped on their cyber deck. Uh, so there, it, it basically burned out a bunch of their programs to make room for itself. And it's now living in their cyber deck. And the cool part is the netrunner is like fully decked out. So they've got virtuality. So the net ghost has effectively, uh, has they've made this deal where they have a set of interface plugs always plugged into that uh, cyber deck and the net ghost is able to use their virtuality to kind of manifest itself to talk to them.
Oh.
I like that.
Very much like Johnny in, uh, 2077, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that, that also it's like reminiscent of like a cursed blade.
Yeah.
Like it whispers to you and stuff, uh.
It, what is his name?
What?
What's the name?
Oh God, I can't. I, I just have to make sure none of my players watch this. Um, they, the, the, this is like the thrust of the current plotline. They got sent into the, into, uh, the hot zone to find an old net port that's still active. Um, they were used as basically, uh, basically bait to catch something in the old net. And what they have not figured out yet is that the thing that is currently in their net runners, uh, cyber deck is actually a rabid. Um, which is going to be attempting to use them to get itself and copies of itself into net architectures all over Night City.
Oh yeah, yeah. Like Raish hasn't done enough damage.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's very cool. I like that. What's it like, uh, centering the campaign around a netrunner? How do the other players, uh, feel about that? And what are you doing to basically make sure that they get their little parts of, uh, of their story done as well?
It's not, currently it's not really centered around the netrunner. It's around sort of the larger, basically the plotline is that they, they get one of those like, you know, uh, too good to be true opportunities from a mysterious client. And they, you know, go in, it goes parachuted. The, the client tries to, you know, tries to kill them. And they have to effectively escape into the combat zone where they're hiding out in an old like, uh, they're hiding out in an old, uh, refurbished hotel that has become this like hideout for people who are looking to get away from the law or corpse or whatever. But they don't know why they were betrayed. They don't know what they, what happened. So the, the, the players are as a group trying to basically reestablish themselves and build up enough power and connections with gangs to basically hit back at the people who betrayed them. And in the meantime, kind of in the background, the netrunner is dealing with the fact that there's, at first they were like, I got, I almost got fried. I don't know what happened. And then they start realizing that there's like weird shit going on with their, with their cyber deck. And just recently they've like actually interacted with this rabid and realized that it is something sapient on their cyber deck. So everyone's.
Hey Cody?
What?
And this is session three, Cody?
Uh, yeah.
Remind, I, uh, remind the viewers how long your game sessions last.
My game sessions are usually four to five hours.
Nice. That's solid.
So it's, it mostly, I'm, I'm leaving that as kind of, it's a thing that will pop up every once in a while, but. It's a thing that will pop up every once in a while, but the the vast majority of the time. The 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 rabbit in their cyber deck is just kind of doing its own thing. Um, like they will go in and do missions with the rest of the team and they jack into the architecture and the rabid. Looking for its own things will also jack into the architecture using their their other cyber deck. Um, but it doesn't like talk to them about what it's doing. So like sometimes things will just happen in the net architecture and the player, you know. Uh, so far has worked out this like kind of deal with with this thing in their in their cyber deck. Um, because the thing in their cyber deck has kind of saved their ass a few times. And is now on this like, I've saved you, so I'm gonna need some payback pretty soon.
Gotcha. It's a shaky ally, basically. It's like an untrustworthy ally, but. Hmm, so huh, I'm sure because that's the thing, you know, you introduce something like that to your players, they're like, okay, I wanna I wanna kill it with fire because. You know, I don't need something like that in my life, but that's why you gotta entice it with some good stuff.
Yeah. Well, it's it's worked out really well because the Netrunner, of course, is, you know, obviously extremely anti-corporate. And the rabid is also a pretty extremely anti-corporate. So they're in this interesting zone where. They've worked out, like I said, this tentative, this tentative relationship of like. The the Netrunner hasn't figured out a way to get rid of it yet. And at the same time, their goals kind of align and the the AI has already threatened basically, all right. I'm moving at the speed of thought. You're moving at the speed of your body. If you try to unplug these interface plugs from this cyber deck, I'm gonna go into your neuralware. And even I don't know what that's gonna do, but it's probably not gonna be good for you.
Diabolical, dude. Diabolical. Jesus. Yeah, I'm I love the idea that it's like you hate corporations. Yeah, me too. Yeah, so we're gonna burn Night City to the ground? Wait a minute, hold on.
They haven't gotten to that part yet.
Oh, man, that's cool. Um, so other, so have they made the connection? Is there a connection with the Rabids? And what happened with why they're on the run?
Yeah, basically, the um, the the Uber, what they're eventually gonna find out is that. They were hired as bait effectively. They sent this Netrunner into like one of the last remaining ports to the old net that the that. Uh, they could find. Their client is actually Ziggurat. Um, it's this like mid-level executive who really wants to impress you are the this, the the face of Ziggurat. Who is, of course, very interested in Raish Bartmas and the Rabids. So they're like, okay, I got some data on where we may be able to find this. So they sent the Netrunner in as bait and basically said, take this chip. They gave him a chip that would theoretically capture uh, capture the rabid when the rabid inevitably tried to, you know, brain burn the Netrunner. But the rabid caught wise uh circum- circumvented the chip and went into the Netrunner's cyber deck.
Gotcha. So, ooh, gotcha, gotcha. So. So can this rabid take down the garden?
Um, at the moment, everything I've been able to gather is that the the garden doesn't really work like the net. So currently it can't. Um, one of the likes, uh, one of the like side quests that the Netrunner is eventually gonna get from the rabid is basically to find a a port to the old net. To go talk to effectively another, like one of the fully transcendent, like just generated out of the ether AI. To try and find a way to get itself into the garden and the city net.
Oh, gotcha. By the way, if.
Wanna be around.
Say, say it again?
Sounds like a fun person you wanna be around. Talk to that GPT.
No. Well, if any of your players are watching now and you haven't turned it off by now, please turn it off. All right, see, you you, this episode's done for you, okay? I appreciate the support, but you're done. I wanted to dive a little bit deeper into it, just game master stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Do so, what what kind of flaw are you introducing for this rabid? Have you thought of something like that where, you know, if the players just know this one little weakness about it?
Um, the key on the rabid is that at the moment it is completely contained to the cyber deck. Um, it can't get out of the cyber deck. It can activate the cyber deck, but it can't actually get out of the cyber deck. Which I kind of consider to be the flaw for all AI creations is that they have to be within a net architecture. And Night City is so air gapped that the the, you know, functionally. If they were to find a way to disconnect the interface plugs from that cyber deck and like bury that cyber deck, they would also bury the rabbit. Um, so it's it's basically, it's an incredibly powerful sort of genie in a bottle situation, but it is in a bottle. You know, so they they, if they can find a way to separate the Netrunner from the cyber deck, they can get rid of it. And even if they kind of can't, you know, the the brutality of the Cyberpunk setting. If they do try to, you know, unplug the cyber deck and the the rabid does try to go into the Netrunner's neuralware. Um, you know, it worse comes to worse, arguably, they could kill the Netrunner and that would kind of put it put an end to all of it. Um, uh, or, you know, there could be sort of like a bit of a. Now we need to go into intensive brain surgery to try to get the neural net out of your brain and also excise this, you know. This code, basically.
Yeah, while making sure it doesn't infest any of our stuff here at the hospital, right?
Yeah.
Um, what about like something like an EMP?
Uh, that sort of thing I've generally assumed will uh, like that will shut down the the tech in the cyber deck. Um, but I've generally assumed it won't like fry the rabid, but it will um, it'll basically shut down the the cyber deck temporarily. So they could try that. They haven't thought of that yet, but they're also in a situation where I. I have a distinct feeling that unfortunately the Netrunner is gonna trust the rabid. Far enough that they're gonna wind up kind of undermining their ability to uh to actually get rid of it.
Yeah, they think they got a Pokemon, but they 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 don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Yeah, cuz the idea is you don't want the rabid to be wise to your plan either. So you can't have like discussions about what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
And you can't just jack out if you want to, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And of course, at the same time, the Ziggurat uh, Ziggurat is looking for them. To try and find them. It unfortunately, in the process of trying to trying to kill them before they knew that they had been bamboozled. They basically uh, using the extremely shaky nature of architecture in the hot zone. They basically brought down the building the players were in. So the players were able to just barely escape, but now Ziggurat thinks they've been crushed under, you know, millions of tons of concrete and rebar. So they're like, there are, there are low level uh Ziggurat employees, like security personnel. Sifting through all this rubble to try and find the corpses of the players and will eventually find out that they're not there.
Hmm.
Hmm.
Interesting. How long you think it would take like a month of excavation before they?
Yeah, I've I've set this on a, basically, I've set this on a on a uh, a time scale. So they've got like a certain amount of time before Ziggurat figures out that they're not dead. And then a little bit of time after that before Ziggurat finds out where they are.
Mm-hmm. I love that. That's that's so exciting, man. I like that. That's really interesting. Uh, it's always good to use a corporate bad guy, especially one that wants that has its own uh agenda.
Classic.
Classic. It always works and it's always fun.
Always works. You're right. It does always work.
All right, well, that's it, folks. Tooms, thank you so much and for listening, for supporting. We really hope you enjoyed the DLCs, the Black Chrome uh sneak peek. We are hoping to see Black Chrome very soon in our hands. I'm sure you guys are working really hard to get that going. Um, Cody, thank you so much for joining us. Don't be a stranger. You could come on anytime you want. When you want to take a break from the Witcher and you just wanna prop it up with your buddies, we're here for you, okay?
Hell, yeah. Sounds good to me.
Anything? Yeah, thank you. Anything you want to tell the folks at home uh before you go back into your cave?
Remember me? No, um, no, I hope you're having great fun with your Cyberpunk games out there. And uh, remember that uh, that. Life is no fun without risk and uh, you know, you can't, you can't feel the pleasures in life if you haven't felt the pain, so. Make sure to hurt your players. Not too much, just a little.
Yeah, go savage on your players is what Cody is saying.
Yes, obviously.
Yeah, every time a Cyberpunk Red character dies, there's a counter in uh in Cody's office that dings. Uh, James, anything you want to tell the Tooms at home?
Uh, nothing this time. I'll have something next time.
Okay, that's it. Night City Council. Yeah, have a great one. We'll see you guys on the next one. Night City Council is adjourned. We'll see you guys. Oh, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. Send me your questions. We love the esoteric ones, of course. And um, I my apologies if we didn't answer your question this this time, we will next time. And we'll see you guys on the next one. All right, bye.